May I have a roll call, please?
Certainly.
President.
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 Here.
And Adolfo G Martinez.
Motion to approve those who are absent.
Second.
For the record, you do have form.
Thank you. Can everyone stand for...
Take the vote.
Okay.
For excuse.
Other votes, the people that are absent. The motion is second.
Motion? And you'll have to vote. I'll vote. Okay.
Have we already seconded it?
You already seconded it.
Yes, vote.
Vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Can everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is consider approval of the meeting of the minutes of the regular meeting on May May 2, 2024.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can I bring up 8A?
Yes.
Motion to bring it up because they need to send something else. Go ahead.
Motion, second? Second by Mr. Casares. Moving up 8A. All in favor?
Aye.
So, do I read first 8A?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Consideration of the Pauline preliminary plat and preliminary plats. 8A, preliminary reconsideration of the replat of block 1713, parts of lot 1, 7, and 8, block 1782, ED, and New York Avenue, Chacon Street, Piedra China Street, into three-point village subdivision. The intent is residential. The purpose of this reconsideration is to place front of the lot utilities. Is it engineer?
Giddy. Sure. This is Frank Gafford. With Canada. Yeah, we have your comments.
Your big points?
Yes.
What are the wishes of the commission? Does anybody have a question?
We have a brief presentation.
Oh, you have a brief presentation? Okay. Okay. Can I state for the record that Commissioner Sindy Cantu came in at 6:04?
Thank you.
Why try? Almost. So it's 7A?
Yes, Madam Chair, for the record, applicant is NHS Laredo Holding Corporation, engineers Guerra Engineering. Proposed use is residential and the zoning for this 24-lot development is R1B. Location view. Area view. The proposed plan. Comments from planning. Fire, traffic safety, and the proposed motion.
Does anybody in the commission have any questions? What are the wishes of the commission? Can I know it?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Garcia, second by Ms. Portillo. For the record, Mr. Velmaris stepped in at 6:05. Can... Okay. Can I vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we come back to citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments? Not a big time? Okay. Next item is public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance, 6A, amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing a special use permit for a tobacco shop on the south two-thirds of lots 11 and 12, block 204, Eastern Division, and approximately 2,572.12 square feet track of land as further described by meets and bounds in each exhibit A located at 1516 South US Highway 83, Suite C. This is a public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing?
Motion to both.
To open public hearing?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Can we just get the powerpoint?
Aye.
Yeah, owner. Garza, Garza applicant. Property location is the south two-thirds of lots 11 and 12, block 204, Eastern Division, and approximately 2,572.12 square feet track of land as further described in meets and bounds as attached exhibit A located at 1516 South US Highway 83, Suite C, 528 square feet. The zone change request is a special use permit for a proposed use of a tobacco shop for e-cigarette sales, letter sent or 24/4/0 against 0. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Measurement map. Zoning overview. Feature land use. Staff recommendation, staff does not support the proposed special use permit. Continuation of the staff recommendation and the proposed motion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak in favor or against this item, please come forth.
How's it going today? My name's Christian. I'm the founder of Cannaveral. And we've been in business for about six years now. We were established in 2018. We are founded on the core principles of our SOPs, which is standard operating procedures. We... I just want to clarify our procedures. We are strict with compliant industry products. We're an industry leader in the hemp and cannabis industry. We are a major player in San Antonio and we do follow strict age requirement policies. And we also have...
Sir, you don't have to talk into the people. You can talk straight up.
Yeah. We also pride ourselves on the ability to adhere to the Department of Health. We also are a big player with the Think of Veterans merchant programs in San Antonio. We also do our annual toll drives for San Antonio as well for the kids. So we try to pride ourselves on the way we kind of handle the business, especially being that there's a lot of recurrences with younger kids having these products. We understand that. So we do try to create a more way to give the ability to give these products people without getting in the wrong hands. So I just want to end this note on basically just giving you understanding that with the sales of e-cigarettes, we're giving the consumers a safer alternative as opposed to being utilizing the use of improper, you know, policies within compliant regulations. That's just the nature of what we do and being that this process is kind of inherently skewed sometimes, we try to do our best, put our best foot forward in providing the services possible in an efficient and proper manner. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, a question for the applicant and if I may. Mr. Garza, do you know why staff is not supporting your application? Do you understand the mechanisms that are at play here?
If I'm not mistaken, I think it's based on the distance for two residentials and then also the parking. I believe that it's short, about five.
And have you seen all of the conditions that would be placed on you if we were to approve this? There's a list of about...
Seventeen.
Twenty.
Twenty? I stopped at seventeen.
Yeah. There's twenty conditions that are placed on you. It's not a question of how you operate your business. I think you do probably a phenomenal job. Like you stated, you have all the processes in place and you know exactly what you're doing and you don't want it to be something bad. However, the reason they don't support it is because there are, in our planning guides, in our development codes, you don't really fit for that area. It's not a good fit for that neighborhood and where this building is. One of the biggest things you have working against you is that you lack a lot of parking spaces. Currently, the place has thirteen parking spaces. Ten parking spaces are taken. There's three parking spaces that you would need and the actual amount identified on the site plan is only eight. So there's a discrepancy of five or a lack of five parking spaces. So this will be hard for you to meet that one condition and that's one of the reasons why staff is not supporting it. And then there are, like I said, the other twenty that are there. Are... Have you read them? Are you sure you want to... Again, if we were to approve this, you would have to live by all of those rules.
Are any chances there? Way I can see the statutes on that, like the...
I have a copy.
A copy, please?
Do you have to be provided by one?
We typically call the applicants prior to the meeting and review all of the conditions with them. So in the phone call, the planners have reviewed why we don't support and the conditions. And then there's a link that we provide to the applicants where they can access our staff report and the public as well. So, but we'll be happy to provide a hard copy to the applicant also.
So, Madam Chair, we...
How about we postpone? So you can go back and look at those twenty, then come back. Now we have an idea what they're talking about because any other way, just for myself, you know what? It's going to be hard to pass. You've got to understand if it does pass, this is what you're going to live by. And I agree with Mr. Velmaris that it's going to be hard.
So it's pretty hard situation.
Right. But read them all and see if you agree to that. And if not, maybe look for another place where you fit into. More about that and not what you do, but where you're trying to put it. All right?
Madam Chair, if you'd be okay, we'll postpone it. That way we don't render judgment on it today. You can come back and maybe at the next meeting and we can take up the public hearing then.
Are we up to date with the information?
Okay.
Right? Rather than say no, let's give you some time to look it over.
Yes, sir.
And get in that information, please.
A motion to close the public hearing and postpone the item.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion to open public hearing, six...
Motion to...
B.
To 6B. Second? Who says second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
6B, amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the assurance of a conditional use permit for building, material sales, cabinet and countertop shop manufacturing with outside storage access use on lots 2 and 3 Commerce Plaza Development Unit 1 located at 1602 and 1702 Commerce Drive.
Madam Chair? For the record?
We can just get the powerpoint. Thank you. Applicant is Serfino Garza is the owner. Property description is lots 2 and 3 on Commerce Plaza Development Unit 1 located at 1602 and 1702 Commerce Drive. The zone change request is actually a conditional use permit for the proposed use of building, material sales, cabinet and countertop shop manufacturing with outside storage accessory use, the letter sent or 41 against 040. Background, the property does have citations on this at this location. On February of 18, 2022, they received a citation for operating a stone marble granite manufacturing shop in commercial zoning B3 diszoning district and is prohibited according to the City of Laredo Land Development Code Book, Article Section 20.63.22. They also received another citation on that same day for operating a business without a certificate of occupancy and is in violation of the City of Laredo Code of Ordinances, Article 5, Sections 18-22, and is in violation of the ICC Building Code, Section 111. On April 25th of 2023, they did receive the same citations again and as well as on January 14th of 2024. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning overview. Future land use. Staff recommendation, staff does not support the proposed conditional use permit and the proposed motion. Thank you, Madam Chair. Anyone who would like to speak in favor or against this item?
Hello. My name is Serfino Garza Junior. My dad is the owner of this property and I just want to just mention that he's been in business here in Laredo for almost 39 years doing this and we've been at this location since 1999. I guess he was not aware of the situation that we're not allowed to do this, but we have been doing this since then, since 1999. And just recently, maybe I think it was last year or maybe I saw citations in 2022. I guess this is when we started receiving complaints and we started having, I guess, problems with this. But I just want to state that, you know, he has been in business for 39 years here in Laredo, Texas. He serves many homes, many homes and many clients around here in the area. And we have been at that location since 1999 actually doing this. I don't know. I guess that's all I would like to state.
Okay. Does anybody have questions for...
Yeah, a question for staff.
Good.
Question for staff. And I guess the applicant can also give input. Have the surrounding businesses or neighbors given any complaints? Beneficial complaints?
We can address that. Yes, we have. We have received complaints from the residents to the rear of the property, complaints of noise and dust from the outside cutting of the various building materials, including the stone. So that is one of the major issues is that the outside activities that are causing noise and dust. So, yeah, we have had complaints about that. And we, I guess, just to amplify, we have mentioned to the applicant that staff would be able to support if all the activity were to be conducted within a wholly enclosed structure. And we did communicate that to the applicant. However, they did not...
Comply.
They felt like they really wanted that outdoor activity. We would be... The city feels like we would be amenable to simply the storage of the building materials. However, the cutting, the noise, those are the things that are causing major problems.
Anybody else?
I have a question. I mean, you all cut this materials during working hours?
Yes.
What type of fence do you guys have in the back for...
What type of works?
Do you all have a fence? Like what type of fence is it that...
Yeah, we have. Actually, the property is fenced.
Is it a block fence or is it a chain link?
That we actually put in when we first got there to the property because also during that time, this was in 99, the neighbors did complain about that. So we surrounded the whole thing and we hadn't had any problems ever since then.
So for 39 years, they've been complying? Because somebody is complaining or they haven't?
No. These sorts of activities are not allowed. The use of the cabinet manufacturing and the stone cutting are uses that are not allowed within the B3. And B3, the underlying zone requires that all activities be conducted within a wholly enclosed structure. So the outside cutting is also not allowed by the underlying zone. So the applicant is seeking both the use and the outside activities to be covered in this conditional use permit.
I think the bottom line is 39 years.
I can only, I'm not sure. I assume that maybe the, you know, if the work nature was different or maybe the business evolved. You know, if there was an evolution in the business, they could have started, you know, with the uses maybe slightly different. So...
Has the ordinance changed in the 39 years? That it's now it's happening or prior to it? Are they...
Cutting is quite an intense use. I mean, we would have to do a search on the ordinance in...
Are they grandfathered in or they're not...
1999.
Is there...
It's an M1 activity. It's a manufacturing activity.
Madam Chair, question for staff. Is there the possibility that this was at one time legal? I mean, it was conforming and just became legal non-conforming?
The sale of the building materials, I mean tile, we've all gone into sort of shops that you can go into sort of a gallery and pick out tile for your home. Those sorts of activities are allowed under the B3, those retail uses. So, but the manufacturing and the outside activities, I cannot imagine where the commercial zone would have ever allowed those types of activities.
And have you been doing that type of activity at that location since day one, since you moved in?
Yeah, that's what...
Cutting outside.
In tile, tile and like stone manufacturing is like in our main business. And actually, we do it like a lot less now ever since like maybe like 2012. I think we've, I think we've, business has gone a little bit down and we've been doing a lot less. But, yeah, that's always been what we've done.
Madam Chair, one other question for staff. The citations, do they remain open? Were they adjudicated properly? I mean, did they pay the fines or are they still open? Did we have to... I mean, is there... Is there something still pending on the legal side?
We don't have information as to the adjudication, do you know?
No, I wasn't aware of the citation issue. So we don't have a disposition, any disposition information on them at this moment. We can get that to you if the commission would like to see that. Just a matter of communicating with the municipal court, but no, we don't have information at this moment.
Clarification or question for staff? So if the applicant follows all of the conditions laid out, including a wholly enclosed building for cutting, that kind of alleviates all the concerns?
Yeah. As I said, we've... Our conditions are always intended to mitigate the negative impacts of a use that isn't allowed by the underlying zoning. So that is our intention. You know, as written out, the conditions to mitigate those negative impacts.
It would have to be some enclosed...
That's correct.
Building.
Yes.
Or something like that.
Staff would recommend that all the activities minus the outside storage of the stone would be conducted within the wholly enclosed structure.
Can you put on the screen the overhead...
In the street.
In the street?
The aerial view?
The aerial view? Can you explain or can you show us where you where you make the cuttings?
Well, most of the...
You could show, you could go up.
Are you able to blow it up?
Most of the like the woodwork and the cutting we do, we actually do do it inside. But we do do some of it like in this little area right here. It's, well, it's not wholly, it's not all enclosed. It's got an opening in the front. But it's got like the side walls and the roof right here in this little area. So most of the stuff we do is actually is inside and then we do a little bit right here in this area.
It's like an open porch.
Yes, exactly.
Madam Chair, would you be willing to close that?
Yes, actually, we've been trying to close that.
You're covering things. You should be able to close it.
Madam Chair, one more question for the applicant. Do you know if your father's paid all the fines, all the citations?
I believe they have. Yes, I believe they have.
So may I have a motion to close the public hearing and make a recommendation of this item?
Motion to close the public hearing and discussion.
Okay. Second?
Okay. Madam Chair, my concern is that this is a non-conforming activity and they've been cited repeatedly for this. And I think our goal is to try to bring them into compliance.
That's right.
More than not let you have the business. We want you to comply.
That's right.
But it's apparent to me so far that you haven't complied and you've been cited repeatedly for the last four years.
Yes.
And so if staff, have you seen the requirements that you have in case we do support and approve this?
No, I have not seen them.
There are some conditions and in closing that area and doing all that work indoors would be one of them.
Okay.
And if you were to violate that after this goes forward, they would remove that condition. Okay. Please, of course, please.
So is this another case where the applicant was not walked through the conditions today?
Can I get a confirmation? Did we did the Pauline's teacher and called the applicant and reviewed the conditions with them?
I guess. Sorry, it's not, okay. I did, I did call the owner, Mr. Garza, and I spoke to him about the conditions, about how if you were to comply and everything was about working in the wholly enclosed. And I did send an email with all the list of the conditions on that email. And that email does get sent to Mr. Garza Junior.
Were they in agreement?
Both the owner and the applicant. Agreement purposes, Mr. Garza did... Mr. Garza, the senior, he did agree about operation within a wholly enclosed structure. However, I did ask for an updated narrative if he could have, so he can have that in writing that he would be able to operate within a wholly enclosed structure. And we never received an updated narrative.
What about other conditions?
Just to be clear, when we transmitted the conditions to him, we were seeking to possibly be able to support the case if they would agree to a updated narrative. However... if they would agree to a uh, updated narrative. However, they did not respond. So we assumed that they continued to want the outside activities and that's why we we were unable to support.
Okay.
Uh, sorry, I I might have missed that email, but um, we have been working on something to do, cause um, yeah, it's pretty like, well, I I I'm not from the email, but like from one of the.
Citations.
I guess, yeah, he he asked us like, we could put a fan, we've already bought, we've already bought like that exhaust fan. And then, but we are working on trying to close that that front area, that 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 porch area off.
I I think the important part is that if you have been cited, 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 um, several times for the same reason, that's why you need to be in compliance first and you need to put um, a little bit more importance on that. So you can continue to do your work as you are accustomed, but in a better way. So we could comply with all these issues that you have had. So I think, in my point of view, that you need to be a little bit more involved, I guess, because they talked to your dad. Um, uh, that's what I'm, that's what I'm understanding. They talked to your dad and you need to be a little bit more involved so we could help you be in compliance and for you to continue to do your
Okay.
your business. So what what are the wishes of the commission?
You have a quick question. Can we appro, can we make a recommendation to approve or put a timeline if they don't apply, if they don't comply within three months, four months, then it's it's not.
Or how can we help, recommend an expiration date for the for the uh, permit? So that, let's say six months, they have to come back and reapply? Um, or in that, in that case, you can, you can, you know, verify if they've, you know, complied with all the conditions and no further citations. Um, but it would require them to come back through the process.
Okay.
Um, another consideration for the commission could be to postpone, similar to the other item, so that we give um, the son a chance to review the conditions and perhaps give us an updated narrative.
I agree. Okay, so can I have a motion to close the public hearing and?
Yeah.
We're already closed it.
Yes, so it's just a.
What is gonna be the recommendation? How is it gonna come out and file?
Let me ask you, Madam Chair, would you be okay if we postponed this?
Um, yes, and then we could like kind of do that.
The motion to postpone, time certain, next meeting?
Second.
Wait, you postponed it for how long?
For the next meeting.
Next meeting. Long enough for him to to work with his dad to see if this, he'll comply with all the conditions. Uh, with the instruction that you provide the updated narrative that staff is asking for.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Second on that.
Okay, so motion was?
To postpone.
Was postponed?
And uh, and for him to bring back an updated narrative, time certain, next meeting.
By Mr. Melendez and second by Tito? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, Madam Chair, I am getting word that the previous applicant, the first case that came forward, they have had a chance to review the conditions and they wish to proceed. They do agree.
They do agree?
The first ones.
Six A?
So.
Yes.
Motion to bring up uh, six A, reconsider.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in, aye, favor?
Aye.
Come on in.
Does she have to reread it now, right?
Yes.
I have to reread it?
Motion to open public hearing, six A.
Okay.
Six A amended the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by authorizing a special use permit for a tobacco shop on the south two-thirds of Lot eleven and twelve, Block two oh four, Eastern Division and approximately two thousand five hundred and seventy-two point twelve square feet track of land as further described by meets and bounds and attached Exhibit A located at fifteen sixteen South US Highway eighty-three, Suite six.
Thank you for your time and your assessment of this SUP. Uh, from my misunderstandings, um, or miscommunication, better yet, I have read the certain statutes and I'm willing to proceed, as we do have compliance with all statutes that are are issued and will continue to remain adhere to those statutes as well for forever, time needs and need.
So now we go ahead and motion to close the public hearing again?
Uh, I still have a question, Madam Chair. Uh, for staff, this is, this is front-facing US eighty-three?
That's correct.
And it's a B three and this type of activity would be permitted in a B four?
It is, well, it requires a special use permit in all the zones that allow it. So it would require it in B three through M two with a special use permit.
Because of the tobacco.
So it's in no, in no zone is it allowed as a use by right.
Okay, so it has to be?
It has to have a special use permit.
Okay, and you're, and?
And and just to, just by way of background, very recently, the distance requirements were increased uh, on these proposed uses because of the special interest that the city has with regard to tobacco and children and so forth. So the distance was was increased from three hundred to eight hundred feet.
And they're, they fall short of that?
By seven hundred and whatever thirty-one feet minus eight hundred is.
Would they have, uh, Madam Chair, would they have been permitted uh, under the older distance?
No, I think they're thirty-one feet away from.
Thirty-one feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Question for, uh, Madam Chair, question for staff. Um, do you know, I know that the property west of um, this property is zoned as residential, but what is actually currently there? Cause it looks like a lot of like abandoned.
It looks like it's a house. It's, you know, it needs some organization, but it is a house.
It is, there, there is a house?
Yeah, there, it looks like there's a house there. Yeah.
Okay. It looks quite hazardous.
Yeah, it is.
The next door?
West to the.
This one or this one?
Looks like there's someone with a lot of outdoor type stuff.
Okay, I thought it was like maybe being used as an industrial.
It is a residence, it is, it's, it's, is it a residence?
When you look at it from the street view, it looks like a residence.
Oh, okay. Okay.
But it could be a residence, right?
Wish that there's not a residence there.
So.
So what are we doing?
He's only thirty-one feet away from that.
I'd like to make a motion, but um, I'd like to um, make a motion to go against staff recommendation and approve um, the item um, with the following conditions that staff laid out.
Subject to the conditions.
Subject to the conditions, exactly, thank you.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Want to oppose? Want to oppose? Mr. Garza? Motion carries.
Okay, now going back.
So, so it's been approved now, it goes to city council and city council has the final say on whether they'll approve it or not.
Okay.
So it's recommended as approval from us, denial from them, and then council will make that decision.
Thank you.
Okay?
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to open public hearing, six C.
Second.
Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the assurance of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on lots one and two, Block three, Calady Heights subdivision, Unit three, and Lot three, Block three, Calady Heights subdivision, Unit two, located at thirty-nine oh two, thirty-nine ten, and thirty-nine twenty, East Delmar Boulevard, respectfully, Suites one oh one, one oh two, and outdoor patio only.
We've been here before.
Yes.
A few. Sweet sober. He's sweet sober.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, we have SKG HP owner, we have Para Ochenta tres as the, as the owner, as the representative. And we have Renata Entre Vino Alibrium as representative as well. Property location, lots one and two, Block three, Calady Heights subdivision, Units three, Unit three. And Lot three, Block three, Calady Heights subdivision, Unit two, located at thirty-nine oh two, thirty-nine ten, and thirty-nine twenty, East Delmar Boulevard, respectfully. Suites one oh one, one oh two, and outdoor patio only, and it's four thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight square feet. Zone change request is an SUP and the proposed uses for a restaurant serving alcohol. Letter sent to fifty-nine, we have one for and none against. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zone change signage? The measurements map? Zoning map? Feature land use map? And the recommendation is staff does not support? The continued recommendation? And the proposed motion?
Do we have anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against this item? Please come up.
Hello, for the record, my name is Maribel Garcia, and it's been a while since I've been here, but I have two items and I'm going for the same uh, special use permit. Um, they weren't able to be here, but for those of you who don't know me, I've been doing TABC licensing and city permits for a while now. I wanna say over fifty licenses, not only here in Laredo, uh, but in the valley. I just got back yesterday from Michigan, going to plenty of other zoning and it was approved, thank God, but it went well. Um, anyway, uh, this establishment is already opened. Uh, that's something I can't figure out because I know uh, staff does not approve it, but they all went through, you know, the permits, uh, building, fire. Um, their nearest school, I understand that, uh, but they do wanna be in compliance. I know that they're concerned once, um, alcohol is involved, I guess, it's just the hours of operation. Uh, they did want to open on certain occasions until two, but because I know that that's an issue when uh, serving alcohol during a close at eleven or late as twelve. So they're willing to let that go.
So basically, okay.
Well, they're, they, we hope they can grant the the special use permit. I mean, they had no option, they had to open. By the time they get a TABC license going through the city to get uh, an SUP, it's pretty much like five months and they're paying rent. It's very expensive. Um, I mean, what they've invested, I mean, just them, I don't know. I mean, the location, they do spend a lot of money. I see that a lot and I see a lot of businesses closing, especially when they're only bars. So serving food will give it a longer life, if you wanna call that. They used to have, they already have a TABC license, but because of the change of location and because they're not at at a B four uh, zoning, now we have to go through all this. So, but they already have it. They used to be at Los Botines, so both my clients that I'm representing uh, know the industry very well. So they're focused on food sales. They're not interested in a bar or.
Okay, um, motion.
Anybody else?
Anybody, anybody else?
She has a question.
Sure.
Okay, just a quick question for staff. Do we have um, any information about that, about why they were able to open, what they?
Yeah, restaurants are allowed as a use by right in the B one and B three on up.
It is when the alcohol sales is is part of that use, that's when the special use permit is required. So oftentimes, they, the applicant or the property owner comes through and they, they go through the gauntlet of of, you know, permits for simply just a restaurant and uh, the restaurants don't have distance requirements, they don't have all the additional requirements that restaurants serving alcohol have. And why is that? It's because we've had um, an issue in the past with restaurants or shall I say, other uses that aren't restaurants that serve alcohol. So that's why this was, this was adopted.
My question is, um, why this applicant was able to open? They already sold alcohol in their prior location, they moved.
Oh, that was outside the city limits, their regulations, Botines, so that did ask for the county, so you don't have to go through any, any uh, permits.
So, um, did they think that opening in this new location on Delmar, that they were gonna be able to serve alcohol?
A lot of times, they also, they wanna be closed though, to them.
But did they think right when they opened that they were, that they already had the right permits?
I'm sorry?
Did they think that they had the right permits?
Oh, no, they they knew, they knew that by going to the Calady Plaza, they would have to go through a special use permit.
Okay, they knew that.
No, they, yes, they knew.
Okay.
And that's why they had to open because.
Madam Chair, but but my clarification would be, when they opened this time here at Calady Heights, did they open and start selling alcohol?
Did they open? No.
They have not sold any alcohol, they're still pending their license.
No.
And the.
Let me tell you something, they can do BYOB, you know? And they can also do complimentary drinks, so they're still serving alcohol. It's complimentary.
Madam Chair, so again, the question is, to this point, they're they're compliant.
Yeah.
Now they're asking for the.
We would know, we would know if they are, they aren't.
There are no citations, they're, as far as you know.
One is gonna be able to sell without the deal, they're not going to. But that's not happening, that we know.
Any, anybody else have another question?
I guess, isn't this the same location where Santa Barra is and they serve alcohol?
The same place, yeah, yes.
Okay, so, I mean, this establishment, I've been there, they serve breakfast, I've been there for breakfast, they have lunch, I've been there for lunch, and they serve dinner.
I get their licensing too.
Yes, and um, we are not allowed to request any alcohol or anything, but my question is, if Santa Barra already has that license, why would we not be able to grant them the license as well? Why would we have to limit their hours to eleven or twelve when the other bar is open until two?
I think it says here until two is mine.
Uh, because we had to ask for Santa Barra, we asked for the late hours, so when you do the TABC application.
So here, you're just asking to be open until?
As a restaurant only, not until two, we want, well, they want it, um, just in case I had like, because they do have a very nice uh, private room that fits, I wanna say maybe twenty-five to thirty, if they wanted to stay a little bit longer or, I don't know, just a special event to be able to stay until two, but they said, you know, we're already very tired, we just wanna go home, let's just focus on the restaurant and that's it. So they're okay, closing at eleven, twelve.
During restaurant hours.
Mm-hmm, restaurant hours, so they're okay with that.
Madam Chair, another question for applicant, do you, does the applicant plan on having outdoor music in the patio area?
No, well, they would, but I think it's only like acoustic music, somebody playing the guitar, but not a band. Cause they do have a very nice patio.
Yeah, the condition is, the decibel noise levels are low by the city, so.
I don't see that on the conditions.
Number ten.
Number ten?
Number ten.
It doesn't have a specific number, just says the noise levels, yeah. I think last week, we we put, we put a specific number on it and I think we're better off just going with the code.
Yeah.
Saying.
To match the code, exactly.
The code and they change and we'll be stuck.
But they're.
Yeah, I think it's hard to go against them considering we just allowed the bar right down the street. I understand staff's recommendation, I mean, they 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 have to live by the ordinance that the city's put forth. Um, but I guess that's where, why we're up here to decide what makes more sense or what's really in the best interest of the public. Unless we wanna change the ordinances, they're they're gonna have to do what they need to do.
Yeah, I agree. Um, I'd like to make a motion.
I just want to clarify, this is a public hearing, and do we have anybody else that wants to speak in favor or against this item before we continue? No? Okay, thank you. Now we can proceed.
Thank you. Um, motion to close the public hearing and uh, go against staff recommendation, um, subject to the conditions.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion carries.
Motion of open public hearing, six D.
Second?
Thank you.
Can we go second? Okay. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately three point seventy four seventy nine acres as further described by meets and bounds in attached exhibit A located south of East Ash Street and east of North Smith Avenue from AG to R one. We have Florentino Caballero as the applicant representative. Property location is approximately three point seven four seven nine acres located south of East Ash Street and east of North Smith Avenue. Zone change request is from AG to R one, proposed use is single family residential. Um letter sent for thirty two, we have none for, none against. Location view? Street view, I'm sorry, aerial view? Street view? Zone change signage? Noise um contour map? Zoning map? Feature land use map? And the recommendation is staff supports? And the proposed motion? Do we have anyone who wish to speak in favor or against this item? Please come forward.
Uh good evening, for the record, my name is Hugo Seca. And I'm here representing Florentino Caballero, he had a family medical emergency. He called me to, come here to represent and uh and the and the applicant, and we supported the zone change. Do you have any questions?
Does the commission have any questions for the applicant?
Just one for staff, um the proposed site is included in the airport noise?
That's correct.
And would it be subject to the, uh would it be, could it avail itself of the uh the grants and the other uh benefits that are available? Or does this fall into something that uh they know that this has got an navigational easement or something of that nature and would not be able to comply with that?
What it is subject to is the additional construction standards. Uh there are additional construction standards in the land development code that pertain to these sorts of uses within the decibel level in that noise contour. And we have, we have indicated it in our staff report.
Anyone else? No more questions?
Motion to close the public hearing and uh support the approval, subject to staff comments.
Second by Ms. Portillo, all in favor? Motion carries.
Motion open public hearing six E.
Second.
Amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning lots one and two block two oh one, eastern division located at fifteen twenty South Malinche Avenue from B one limited business district to B three. Applicant is Jose Samielle, the owner, property description lots one and two block two oh one, eastern division located at fifteen twenty South Malinche Avenue. The zone change request is from a B one to a B three, the proposed use is an auto dealer. Letter sent for twenty two, four zero against zero. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zone change signage? Zoning overview? Feature land use? Staff recommendation, staff support, proposed zone change? Proposed motion, thank you, Madam Chair. Do we have anyone who wish to speak in favor or against this item?
Uh good evening, my name is Jose Samielle, I'm the owner of Camp Car. And um um uh we just moved the the company there. We were renting and then we bought the the property, so we're not trying to change it to the another song, so we can um offer it without the, it's cause the previous owner, he had a permit, right? Um but now we wanna change it uh to a B um.
B three.
B three, yeah. Sorry, it's cause it's my first time here.
And please, what what kind of business do you?
It's a uh used car dealer.
Used car dealer?
Yeah, and um yeah, there uh we we were renting uh on the side, the like the other, there was another um car lot. And uh he has a B three, so I think uh we can have it too.
Does the commission have any questions?
Yeah, pretty straightforward.
So do we have, thank you, do we have anybody that wants to speak against this item? No?
Motion to close the public hearing and recommend uh support of the application.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Motion open public hearing six F.
Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning lot eight block fourteen thirty one eastern division located at fourteen oh eight South Milmo Avenue from B three to an R three. For the record, we have Fidel Hernandez and Elba Reyes as the owner and we have Elba Reyes as applicant. Property location, lot eight, block fourteen thirty one, eastern division located at fourteen oh eight Sabimo Avenue. Zone change request is B three to R three, proposed use is residential for a mobile home. Letter sent for twenty seven, we have none for, none against. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zone change signage? Zoning map? Feature land use map? And the recommendation is staff supports? And the proposed motion? Does anyone, is anyone here to wish, wishes to speak in favor or against this item?
Motion to close the public hearing and support staff's recommendation, support the application, sorry.
Second by Mr. Rahel. All in favor? Motion cap.
Motion to open public hearing six G.
Second by Ms. Portillo. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the insurance of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on lot one, block, lot one, block one, Jackman Ranch subdivision unit four, located at seventeen oh one Jackman Road, suite RB one and outdoor patio only. For the record, we have Renhard Properties as the owner, we have Casa Ramona as the applicant and Alex Water Librium LLC as representative. Property location, lot one, block one, Jackman Ranch subdivision unit four, located at seventeen oh one Jackman Road. Zone change request is a special use permit and the proposed use is a restaurant serving alcohol. We have um letters sent for twenty four, we have none for, none against. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zone change signage? Distance map, measurements map? Zoning map? Feature land use map? And the recommendation is staff does not support? Continued recommendation? And proposed motion? This is a public hearing, anyone who wish to speak in favor or against this item? Please come forward, go ahead.
For the record, my name is Maribel Garcia, um this is another client of mine and it's a very nice restaurant, if you haven't gone, I recommend it, highly recommend it, uh so same thing, Es Barrocho en tres, they're operating. Uh they know the industry, this are people that have two restaurants in the Riviera Maya, so she's from here, from Laredo and well, she decided to open um a broncheria, you can call it and.
A what?
Branch, broncheria, broncheria, hmm broncheria. Uh so same thing, they're they're operating right now. But they're applying for the TABC license and same thing, they're willing to close at eleven, that's not a problem. They're focused on the food.
Do we have anybody that wants to speak against?
They're they're short fifty eight parking spaces.
They're short?
Right, they're short fifty eight parking spaces.
Any, any questions from us?
Yeah, dude, you know what, they're focusing on the food. They're focusing on the food, but we don't have enough parking there, one. If they're focusing on the food, then why, why are we coming for alcohol license if they're focusing on their food?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
They're they're focusing on food, that's what you keep saying, and they're happy with eleven o'clock. But we don't have enough parking either.
But they're work, they're open right now.
They're still, they're in compliance, they can be open all they want, they're still in compliance because there's not enough parking spots. So that's a big issue, and especially here in Laredo, because you go somewhere, you can't park anywhere. I just have a problem with that, that if they're open anyway, well, that wasn't a smart move to move into a building that doesn't have enough parking and and they know the business, apparently.
Well, yes, they do, but it's a nice building and you know that's one of the things, a lot of my clients, they go, they don't even check, they don't even know that they're not in a correct zone to sell alcohol, they get into these contracts and of course, if they don't ask the landlord, well, they wanna rent it. They don't tell them.
But if they have other businesses, they have two, three, they know what they have to comply with, that's just, that's that's, I don't, I can't, I don't understand that. It's hard for me to believe that.
Well, not here in Mexico, I said the Riviera Maya, they have two restaurants.
I know, but I know, you all walk through the cycle, the path, and this is what you need, this is what it is. And I know that we need to do a better job, not you all, but who have the real, people that are selling them and renting these places need to tell them the full story of what's going on, so we don't struggle, the city doesn't look bad.
Yeah, we, that that is a major theme that we hear over and over that.
I didn't know.
Yeah.
I I have a question for staff. Right across the street, I I know it's complicated there because I think the gym is right behind it, and then there's like a four stop and light there, right? But right across the street, there is some kind of parking. Right, and it's basically a lot of parking there. I don't know if they can make like arrangements or something.
But they can, they can comply, so that they will have to, um because, you know, the the permit allows the use, but it does not give variance or waiver to the parking requirement. So at the time of the certificate of occupancy, or when they come to, you know, get whatever permits are necessary, they will have to provide those additional spaces in some fashion. So if it's out, you know, offsite parking, if it's valet parking, if it's shared parking, they will have to uh make those arrangements and prove that they are able to comply with the land development code regarding parking.
I do wanna mention something that you said about the parking, I know that Mr. Reinhardt, he's the landlord, he spoke to the owner of Rock Fitness because they do have the big parking lot that uh that they're able to use if needed. So, cause it's always empty, they don't really use it, it's just there like a parking, so I don't know if you would like a letter, something from.
What is required, it has to be signed, it has to be um written, written agreement, it has to exist for the duration that the business exists. And the offsite parking or the shared parking has to um be able to accommodate all the uses. So and they can't overlap on hours, so it's it has to have enough parking for all the uses that are that are that are um being proposed.
Madam Chair, a question about the the parking, some of the occupants of that building are not open beyond five o'clock or six o'clock, is that correct?
Um what am I seeing? This is number forty six.
The other ten minutes.
Hours of operation. Yes, I see that uh there's an office repair, it it closes at five, so there are a a number of locations that do close at five. However, the code again does require that there be no overlap. And since this opens at eight AM, I mean, there's no, there's no room there, you know, they're overlapping all hours.
I was gonna say, I thoroughly understand, but you know, we've we've looked at this before in other cases where we know that the rest of the parking spaces will become available at a certain hour. And then uh with respect to the property to the south, it's a very large parking area, do we know how many spaces exist there? And could, could we stipulate that they have either a lease agreement or some type of a use agreement as part of the SUP? Again, stating all the all the.
Well, the the SUP requires them to comply with the land development code, so at that point, they'll need to, you know, when they come in, they'll need to provide and com- and comply with that, those parking requirements.
They should bring that to us, if they're gonna get those parking spots, so we shouldn't put. That there's to make that adjustment.
I'm sorry?
It's not, what I'm saying is, yeah, the client should say, this is our, we're short, this is what we're thinking of bringing you parking, not us give them the ideas or that's not our job, our job is to, this is what is coming. Your job is to say, oh, I don't have, what am I gonna do to comply? Not find shortcuts for you all, that's not our job to do, our job is to say, see it as it is. You come with the idea, well, we're looking at this property, if this property's had parking, not just, well, we don't have it, that's it. That's my problem.
Well, Mr. Garcia, so uh but it's open right now, like I said.
I know, but you all need to contact him and say, if it's possible, that way I can comply with what the city needs. We're not gonna go, I'm sure they're not gonna go and ask for that.
No, no, I mean, we're willing to do that, I mean, you're talking about the parking spaces from uh.
There's the extra parts, parking spaces that are that are lacking.
Yes.
There's about eighty parking spaces.
And people go in, I mean, they eat and they go out, they don't stay there very long, but there's a lot of offices there. They open early, but most of the offices, they need.
That's what Mr. Maté brought up, but they 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 open up at eight o'clock when you all open up, it's hard to do that. There has to be some kind of a uh way to agree, to figure that out when they're actually doing their numbers.
I know building does their calculations. Different than planning zoning does, so um they would have to comply with the parking to get a occupancy permit. But they already have it, so that's the concern. You already have an occupancy permit, you're operating as a restaurant, and now you're asking to add alcohol, which creates additional stipulations for you. And you've read the ones that are already included and you all are in agreement with staff recommending?
Other comments?
Steph, when you're making the uh cover this, the background check, there's no council member Dominguez.
I know.
Just a little slip up. Everybody's human, everybody makes mistakes, right, thank you.
So?
Madam Chair, my only, again, my concern is that uh they're not gonna meet the requirements for parking unless they're able to get some type of an agreement with those folks in the back. Written agreement, which is part and parcel to them be able to get a certificate of occupancy, cause they're not gonna meet the requirement. That said, according, just looking at the staff recommendation and the impact analysis, there's no impact with the established land use pattern, it's not gonna create an isolated zoning district, there may be some adverse influence uh influence living conditions, but it's front facing Jackman, so traffic allure. Um and so the only real reason that we would consider not supporting this would be parking. And that's something that they would have to take, and it's a big, it's a big leap, but that would be the only reason why we wouldn't support. And there's no real impact to to the neighborhood, in my opinion, it would just be the issue that.
They're not in compliance.
Not in compliance with parking, and that could spill over into the streets and and again, council members that are, the board members said earlier, this is what we wind up dealing with later, this, that's the aftereffect.
I did that one too, so they have a reception hall there, I mean, there was no parking, but I know things change, so.
So what are, what are the wishes of the commission? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing and support staff's recommendation not to support unless unless they're. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and support staff's recommendation not to support unless, unless they're, they're selling with parking. I would second that.
Okay.
But don't they still have to go through the parking?
Through the parking, they would, but they...
We could...
Well, they, I think what we're trying to say, what we're trying to say is that we would go with staff recommendation, right? But I think when they're applying for the permit, the permit, she would have to, um, obliged to all the, the steps, and one of the steps would be complying with, um, parking, right?
Yes, if there's, if, if I may, if there's a, a level of comfort, we could suggest that, uh, one of the recommendations that you all could add is that by the time this goes to, uh, City Council, that they provide, um, some documentation that shows how they will address the, the, uh, parking deficiency. But whether it be valet parking or alternative...
That's it, just valet parking, everything else is, everything else fits it. Just that little piece of, and they can come back and say, you know what, we're gonna use that other property, we're gonna do valet, that's perfect.
So, how would we work?
Just, add that as a...
So we table it and see if that's, could we deal with the other ones?
You, you, you could table it, or you could just add it as a recommendation.
Mr. Sir, can you withdraw your motion, so we can discuss more? I withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my motion.
Question, um, could we stipulate that they have to have that narrative or that plan in place before they go to council?
That's, yeah, that's what you're saying.
And additionally, that we would require them to have some type of written agreement with the landowner for that, so they can be compliant with building when they do, uh...
Yes.
Have that calculation.
Yes, we could, you could make that as a recommendation, and then, uh, we could also attach it as a requirement of the, a condition of the, of the permit, that the, uh, parking, shared parking plan, the agreement, be attached to the ordinance.
Could we just stipulate that they must comply with parking?
It's already there.
Yeah.
It's already there. Uh, that is a condition of, that, that, uh, we've gone back and forth with this, because the Land Development Code, we, we write all these conditions, but oftentimes, we, we, we kind of struggle with, do we really need to write that they have to comply with the Land Development Code? I mean, that's, that, you know what I mean, that it, it is a given, that everyone has to comply with the Land Development Code. So, we write it in even though it's sort of redundant, you know?
And it is, and it, and it is written there, that they would have to.
Yeah, okay, so...
So, I, if I can make a motion to close the public hearing and go get staff and support the application, subject to that condition that they meet the Land Development Code's parking requirements.
Do you also have to provide documentation?
And, and provide the documentation of the agreement.
And provide documentation?
And provide...
I agree with that.
By the council, maybe?
Prior, prior to council?
Prior to council.
Okay. Prior to council, so that's the motion, second, who?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to open public hearing.
Six H.
Six H.
Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on Lot One, Block One, San Isidro McPherson Number One subdivision located at ninety-nine oh-two McPherson Road, Suite fourteen and fifteen.
Madam Chair, for the record. Applicant is, um, Ramgon Management LLC, owner Bolios Cafe LLC applicant. Amanda Montoya is the representative. The property description, Lot One, Block One, San Isidro McPherson, uh, Number One subdivision located at ninety-nine oh-two McPherson Road, Suites fourteen and fifteen. The zoning request, it's a special use permit for the proposed use of a restaurant serving alcohol. Letter sent were thirty-five, four, zero, against, zero. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Measurement map. Zoning overview. Future land use. Staff recommendation, staff support the proposed special use permit. The continuation of the staff recommendation. And the proposed motion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this item?
Good evening, for the record, uh, the couple of animals. Uh, I'm one of the owners of Bolios, and we're planning to open our third location here. Uh, we appreciate if, uh, you would agree with, uh, the motion that the staff has, uh, made. And, uh, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I just, have you read all the conditions, Rick, that they put on here? Are you, are you in agreement with all of those?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have anybody that wants to speak against this item?
No. Where are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to close and support the staff's recommendation of approval.
Second, I have a discussion, uh, I have a question for staff. You're suggesting these conditions, can we just, as part of the motion, include the conditions, uh, as part of the support? Because you're just, it says, if approved, staff suggests the following conditions, so should we stipulate that those conditions be met?
Must be met.
Would that suffice?
I think we've always assumed that we would, that the, the recommendation of approval includes the conditions that we've, that we've, unless you recommend to amend any of our conditions.
Right, in this particular case, though, the word says suggest, so they get approval without those conditions.
No, it misses.
They could come back and say, we only suggested those, over not required.
I think we are in the motion, um, subject to conditions, I think that's what it changes.
If we, if we feel, if you feel more comfortable, we can change our wording to subject to the following conditions, or...
Right.
Yeah.
If approved, staff recommends, do you...
You recommend the following conditions.
Good, Rick.
Yes?
Recommend suggest?
Okay.
I think it's always our motion, so it's...
Yes, motion to...
Motion to...
To close.
To close the public hearing, support the application, subject to the conditions written.
That was already a motion, right? We did.
But you did, he did.
Okay. But you changed the wording.
Was she?
I just said, report to, to support staff recommendation, period.
Okay.
Because everything is there.
Okay. So, who does second? Motion by Tito Garcia, second. Kian.
I have, I think a lot of us.
I think we all.
Second. I'll second it.
Uh, Cortillo, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
My understanding is the first three support, this is if they want to comply.
If they want.
That's, yeah, that's what she said.
That, that is right.
This is what you have to do, this is...
May I have a motion to open public hearing for six I?
Motion to open public hearing six I.
Second. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately two-point-eight-six acres and one-point-eight-four acre as further described by meets and bounds in attached Exhibit A located at eighty-three oh-one and eighty-three eleven Sandario Avenue from B three to B four. Thank you, Madam Chair.
For the record, we have Laredo Holdings and Lasaro, Lasaro Chaviria, um, as the owners who have KCI Technologies, Technologies as the applicant and representative. Property location, we have approximately two-point-eight-six acres and one-point-eight-four acres located at eighty-three oh-one and eighty-three eleven Sandario Avenue. Zone change requests at B three to B four. Proposed use is commercial parking for a truck, for truck and heavy equipment. Letter sent is nine, we have none for, none against. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Future land use map. And the recommendation is staff supports. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone who wish to speak in favor of this item?
Uh, good afternoon, members of the commission, staff, Edward Ochoa with KCI, uh, representing the owner, and, uh, just here to speak in favor of the item. If you have any questions for us. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Motion to close and support staff's, uh, support the application in the B four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion carries.
Motion to open public hearing six J.
Public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M one, Light Manufacturing District on a tract of land totaling twenty-five acres more or less as described by meets and bounds in the attached Exhibit A and known as an Annexation Tract One located at FM fourteen-seventy-two and north of Pinto Valle Drive.
Hi, yes, Madam Chairman. For the record, the applicant is Texas Department of Transportation. The engineer of record is Garber USA. The proposed use is an armory. The proposed initial zoning for this development is M one. Letter sent, eight, zero, four, and zero against. General location. Street view. Two-hundred-foot notification. Aerial view. Something is...
So, I like it.
Zoning map. Future land use. Sketch of the area. And staff recommendation, staff supports the proposed annexation, and staff supports the proposed zoning.
Thank you.
And the proposed motion.
Let's move on. Thank you.
A quick question, uh, Madam Chair.
Yes?
Is this a military area?
It is proposed for the Texas Military for Armory, their use. They're actually relocating from the location that they currently have, off of Loop Twenty, and they're relocating to the side due to the highway extension.
Okay, got it.
And I, actually, just for a bit of information, you will see this item, uh, coming up in one of the plaques as well, coming up for final approval.
Is it anyone, anybody else here that wants to speak in favor of this item?
He gave a long word.
I, I don't, is anybody here?
Make it worth the trip, right?
No.
Good evening, my name is Tim Brooks, now, with the Texas Military Department, project manager of this project. And we're excited to get out of where we're at, our property is being taken over. So, we're evacuating, so we're moving out, um, to Pendle Valley, we're excited about getting out there. It's a larger property, it's given us a lot more opportunity to, to, you know, support Texans on what we're doing at the National Guard level. Any questions?
Thank you, thank you for your service.
Thank you. So, this is a public hearing? No? Yes, does anybody want to speak against? No?
Motion to close and support staff recommendation, so the annexation and initial zoning.
Second, Mr. Rafael. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion carries.
Motion to open public hearing six K.
Public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M one on a tract land totaling four-hundred-seventy-two-point-eight-two-forty-nine acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached Exhibit A and known as an annexation, uh, annexation Tract Two located north of Union Pacific Boulevard and west of International Boulevard.
Yes, Madam Chairman. For the record, the applicant is right, Kilimba Second, Kilimba Properties. The engineer of record is a Mesquite Engineering. The proposed use is light industrial warehousing, and the proposed initial zoning for this development is M one. Twenty-four letters were sent, zero, four, and zero against. General location. Street view. Two-hundred-foot notification map. Aerial view. Current zoning, zoning map. Future land use. Sketch of the area. And staff recommendation, staff supports the annexation, staff does not support the initial zoning for the entire tract.
I will go.
Pardon me?
I will explain.
Okay, the future land use map, in addition to classifying a portion of this tract as light industrial, the eastern area is predominantly classified as low-density residential. Now, staff supports a B three zoning designation in area being a one-thousand-foot buffer along the eastern edge of the tract, as it abuts the western edge of the United High School, main campus, United High School, ninth third campus, and the proposed Kilim Checo Elementary School. Furthermore, staff supports an R one zoning designation for an area being a one-thousand-foot buffer along the northern and eastern edges of the tract, as it abuts the northern edge of the proposed Kilim Checo Elementary School and the western edge of the International Boulevard extension. So, primarily the future land use as well as the proposed proximity of the source.
Okay.
And the proposed motion.
This is a public hearing, anyone who wish to speak in favor of this item? Ayes.
Um, hello, good evening, uh, Madam Chair and Commission, my name is Orlando Navarro, for the record. Um, I'm here to discuss this because, um, there's, there's a bigger picture to this area, and I just thought it, more information would be better for everybody. Um, if you look at our layout, I don't know, do I have control? I guess this one...
Actually, I have a layout, I have the layout, if you need it.
Um, I think I'm not able to work with this, but the question is gonna separate them.
I think they plan to develop it that way, which is what I would ask.
No, that's fine, I can do so. So, what we've done is, uh, there was some objectives that we wanted to, to accomplish. One was a traffic at International Boulevard. So, what we're doing is, if you're, if you know this area, where United High School is, that's Longhorn Boulevard, we're bringing that across, uh, to East Point, to McPherson, down, so it can, can connect.
To the west, that's to the west, or...
Sorry?
To the west.
To the west, right, and then the next street, uh, to the north, we're doing the same thing and bringing that down. The, the reason we went up this far, if you were to take this property and go to thirty-five, that's gonna be the interchange for Vaius, the Vaiucio, the, the overpass at thirty-five. The state's working on it, it's under construction. That's, that's gonna be a four-hundred-foot right-of-way, which is the equivalent of I thirty-five, okay? So, it's gonna run east-west, it's gonna go from Mines Road, cross over thirty-five, and cut through this property going east. It's gonna have access roads, overpasses, everything, to prepare for future, uh, traffic, warehouse traffic. North of that will be another four-hundred right-of-way, that's gonna run from thirty-five angle down. That'll be just south of the railroad tracks from the Union Pacific Railroad. That's another four-hundred foot right-of-way that that's gonna run through. Um, the idea, working with TexDOT and other people, is to prepare the roadways so that we could move traffic as it's coming, uh, to the east. One of the things that we found is, this is, this is a big track, it's already been put out there, we already have people knocking on the door, it's gonna go fast. That's the change, before, um, you used to have acreage like this and you'd spend some time. Now it's, and I'm sure you're aware of the speed of how fast this is going. People are looking for warehouses, and we're trying to accomplish that, um, with these roads that are coming in. So, you don't see the road here, because the design is being done by Webb County, but they're gonna be pushing it through. And in the future, we'll be coming in with more warehousing, that's gonna be just below the railroad tracks and connecting Unitec, and then we're gonna have roads to try to connect Unitec to kind of get the, the traffic out of Carrier. It's not gonna be overnight, but that's the plan. So, this is, we're asking for M one, we understand, uh, what you're talking about, the, the thousand-foot from the school. Um, we don't propose to put warehousing on the other side of the creek, I think you see that green, that green is the creek that's there. Those of you, I, I know you've had plenty of softballs, I mean, baseballs fall in there. Um, along that, we're looking at B four there. We are in discussions with UISD, UISD would like to put a, a bus terminal here. And so that would be what be, would be across from it. We have a detention pond, and that leaves us with one corner and the whole property. I looked on the maps, all the bus terminals are B fours. We'd like to maintain that so that we could, we don't have any issues when we're, we're negotiating with the school district. Um, but you're gonna see in the future, uh, the land use map will have to be updated because we're getting, the demand for warehousing is so much. Um, there's a lot of area that might have to be changed, because you have a residential towards the north, and this is becoming warehouse area. That's gonna be a big deal, because if not, everything that comes forward for annexation will have an R one, and everybody's gonna be coming in for M one, so you're gonna have that. So, I don't know when that'll happen, but I think... we can kind of look at that because Laredo's hot right now and warehouses is coming out. Do we plan to put warehousing next to the school? Absolutely not. Do we plan on doing anything next to residential? No. In between Vaiusio and the residential, we have buffers with, uh, that'll go to the highway. So you'll see from residential, we might put townhomes or, or, uh, commercial stores and then we'll get to, to Vaiusio. But, um, I don't want, obviously, anything, we want a buffer before we get to anywhere. Uh, but it's just, it's a sliver that we're looking at and that's the only thing, uh, to go to make it. If it can't be M1, we'll accept the B-four. And if we can get M1 for the whole thing, well, that's fine too. But I think this is the, the expansion of the highways. Uh, I don't know if Mr. Mandiva from MPO can come and, and explain the, the future layouts of all these big roads that are coming in, but the intent is to put those big roads to handle the, the warehouse traffic, excuse me, the trailer traffic. And, um...
I have a question for, um, about the buffer. So, are you accepting the thousand of the buffer or no?
Well, I'm not sure that that ordinance is, if there's an ordinance, I think the ordinance is five-hundred. Is there, or is there even an ordinance? She's talking about the separation.
The buffer that they...
The tra, the truck parking?
No, 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 no.
The buffer that we're talking about?
Uh-huh.
No, we're recommending that for a thousand feet east of, I'm sorry, west of the schools.
That's right.
We would support a B-three.
A B-three.
And then for a thousand feet north of the, sort of the school location at the northern boundary where we would be comfortable with the R-one. And of course, the applicant can come in later, once we know more certain what exactly will be happening out there to more precisely, you know, ask for the correct zoning. B-four does still allow warehousing, so we wouldn't be able to support that, but...
Not the B, not the B-four, but yes, the B-three?
Yes. We, we are in support of B-three for the, for the thousand feet that we've indicated.
Yeah.
And the, the R-one to the, to the north. That's, that's our position.
Okay. And, once again, I don't know if there's an ordinance. It's a recommendation, but I don't think it's an ordinance that states the distance. It's just a recommendation. Am I correct?
No, that's correct. That's correct. It's, it's, it's simply, we looked at it and we, you know, considering, considering the proximity of warehousing to school activities. We know we have the, have already experiencing that issue and we wanted to make provisions to try to...
To be proactive and not...
Exactly.
Not, not come to the same problem that we already have, for example, in Mines Road or Labo.
And, and there's remedies for them to come at a later date and change that.
They can, they can come, come...
In, okay.
In later.
So, if you, if you look at this property, you see the green, that's the creek that's there.
Okay.
If you, if you can think of the school, the school has the parking lot that runs to the building. So the spacing from the building, including the creek and getting to our property is over fi, uh, thousand feet.
So, Madam Chair, that was my question for, for, for the applicant. And of course, your engineer is here, so are you planning to do inline detention in that creek, widen that channel? Because it does narrow. I mean, I drop off my daughter at United, uh, freshman campus and as the road term, uh, terminates there, the creek isn't as, as wide or as visible as it is at United High School, which is just, you know, two blocks away, three blocks away. Or as it is over by Academy and those places, or where the other park that we have in, in District Six in the, in that area, the channel is wider, much wider. So, again, provides you a nice buffer between what you have already at East Park, is that what it's called?
East Point.
East Point, yeah, East Point and school and the residences. You have that big creek serving as a nice buffer. So if your intent is to do the same thing, continue on with that channel all the way up, then you're, you're going to wind up wider than a thousand feet between, between school and...
School and...
So it's part of their, as part of their package, they did provide a preliminary layout. So we did do some scaling based on the recommendations of the thousand feet. They are proposing an earthen channel adjacent to the Kilim High School. It was scaled off at about a hundred and forty-five feet approximately. So we do have some of those dimensions of what more or less a thousand feet would be.
Oh, no.
Uh, I think so, on the, on the color screen.
Does that include the earthen channel?
Well, the earthen channel down here that they're proposing is a hundred and forty-five feet. So the floodplain, I mean, the floodplain is there. They do have the ability to, uh, petition with, uh, the city and with FEMA to make some channelization or some change, uh, channel improvements to narrow that, but that, that's what they're proposing.
So you, you'd be applying for a little more, a little more and then a little more?
For the record, Uboseca with Kilim Development, Mesquite Engineering. Uh, yes, uh, we're just, we're, we're trying to annex the property. Uh, there's a million ways we can develop. Um, but yes, uh, we are pretty much mimicking what's to the south. The width of the drainage system will be a hundred and forty feet, just the way they have it on, uh, San Isidro. So the distance between the residential and the, and the, and the industrial on the west side of the channel is, it'll be practically the same. Also, like, uh, Orlando was saying, uh, most of the parking lot for the schools are on the, it's on the west side, so there's an additional buffer. And, and even if, if we decide just to keep the, uh, the, the floodplain as is, it, it provides a natural, natural, uh, buffer by itself.
So that's the, the, so, we're asking for a B-four on this. As I said, we're working with the school district to try to put the bus, a bus terminal out there. They would like to move it. Uh, my understanding is the one that they have on Delmar Boulevard, uh, behind the school, that one no longer complies, I think. I don't know if that's the right term, but they want to move that bus facility and go north with it. And so, they're, they're expected to go there. So I, I don't foresee, well, I can tell you right now, we, we don't see warehousing going here. We're looking for staff, support staff for the warehousing, businesses that would support warehousing. And then as far as the, to the north, the north corner, which is International Boulevard, um, that's going to be right on the corner of Vaiusio, which is going to be a highway. So that one is going to be, that one, that's a tough one because it's right on the corner of a highway. Um, we don't plan, uh, to put anything to disrupt the schools. You know, we, we, we agree with that, but we could have a commercial business that wants to come in here, hotel, you know. So, um, I don't foresee this. We'd probably come in for a downzoning this one just because that's a, a corner at International and Vaiusio in the future.
Yeah, and, but just looking at the thousand twenty-eight, more or less, uh, there's room to provide that buffer between the, between the school and, and the commercial that we want along the future Vaiusio, east extension. Yeah, so yes, uh, we have looked at this area and to be honest, I mean, yes, we're not going to be building, um, a warehouse right next, on the north side of the school, of the future elementary school. That we, uh, in, in our minds, in, in talking to management, that area, we're looking into multifamily probably.
Um, so just a comment, um, and just kind of where I am with this item. I think that, um, just looking at historically, some of the issues that we've had in the city is exactly putting an M1 next to residential. I know that currently, we don't actually have residential, um, right there in that uh, property that's a budding, but, um, we do have a responsibility as a commission to protect that, those sorts of buffers between residential and, um, manufacturing.
Madam Chair, uh, in response, excuse me, um, we, we were okay with a B-four there and remove the M1?
So, yeah, so I know that, um, I know that you're asking for an M1, you're okay with a B-four. Um, but I do think that because we don't have specific plans just yet, um, that we could kind of move forward with what staff is proposing and then on an as-needed basis change the zoning. Um, that way, we continue protecting the residential properties, um, or the residentially-zoned properties. Um, and then, you know, kind of create those buffers within this tract, but currently, we're not able to do that, um, you know, if we're if we keep a B-four right next to a residential.
Right next to...
So if, if we go with a B-four that you're okay with, it's still a budding, um, residential zone?
No. Um, but where exactly are you talking about? Because where the residential is?
I guess not residential, but what is, uh...
It's the high school.
Is classified as low-density residential. It is, it is not actually residential, like, res, residential homes are not there currently, but it is zoned as, uh, low-density residential.
Okay, um, what we, on the east side, is United High School?
Yes.
I know it says United Kilim, but it's United High School. And then north of that is the ninth grade campus.
Yeah, I understand, but it is, uh, technically an R-one is what I mean.
I'm a little confused.
The, the track directly across the ninth grade campus, Madam Chair?
Yes, it is, it is R-one because, uh, institutional are allowed on, on R-one.
Yeah.
In R-one.
Okay. I get what you're saying now. Okay.
Yeah.
And is that the site that you all are recommending for the bus barn or?
The bus barn would go...
Be across the creek.
It would go across the creek, okay? It'll be on the west side and, am I too high? Too low? Let me change the... Yeah, to our design?
Where is that? Right here, it's, yeah.
They're interested in Block Four. That's what they're looking at with, am I right in saying that?
No.
Block Two. Block Two is where they would like to go, which is directly west of the high school.
I, I'd probably have to check, but as, uh, as a supplementary auxiliary use to the school, um, it would also be allowed in the B-three, um, if it's an institutional use, so...
If that's the case, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah. I, I would have to check on it. I, I don't, I don't want to rely totally on my memory, but schools and their, their
auxiliary or...
auxiliary supplementary uses are allowed in most zones.
That was the nerve-wracking part because we look at the maps of their B-fours and so I was like, oh, you're going to change it and then I'm going to have to...
I mean, if worse comes to worse and it would, you know, if it would be considered like some sort of transportation use, it would require the B-four. Uh, I mean, we could accommodate it with a conditional use permit. So, and I think probably everybody would be very comfortable with that, you know?
Madam Chair, at this point, you're only asking for the initial zoning.
Okay.
And, and I think to protect the, the residents, uh, as Commissioner Portillo said, maybe B-three would be your best bet for the now. And again, you're going to come, when you guys get ready to develop, you're going to bring this back to, for plating and so on, so forth. So at those point in times, we'll be able to, to do that.
Right. And, and, that be fine, I know this process is going to continue and we're going to continue, but it, it just, um, we try to comply with the ordinance as much as possible. If there's no ordinance and it's just a recommendation, that happens a lot and it, it ties up development. So just to keep that in mind, uh, but we're, we're fine with, with that.
You're fine with a B-three, but not necessarily...
Well, I would like a B-four, right?
Yeah.
And because this is based on distance, but there's no ordinance, it's just a recommendation. So, you know, if it, if it were ordinance, I understand that, but if it's not, it's just recommendation. Recommendation will be done for everything, you know, at somebody's opinion. And so that's what concerns me. But, um, we'll still go forward the way it's presented and, and then we'll take...
Madam Chair, and, and my point would only be, you can argue those points stand. You don't need to do that right now. Right now, we can give you a B-three, you guys would want...
We just want to record this five hundred feet.
And for the record, there is no ordinance to the thousand feet. And when you come back and apply for that at that time, then we'll, again, we'll apply the ordinance, not the recommendation or suggestion. We'll apply the ordinance at that time, but for now...
Just wanted to go on record. And also, just kind of educate everybody on the roads that are coming. But other than that, we're, we're fine.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, for the applicant and for staff, Vaiusio, uh, right now, I think is planned all the way to thirty-five. Uh, that is currently funded and...
Yes.
And under, uh, under design, I believe, and then
It's, it's...
Does it also include the east side of thirty-five or is it just to thirty-five at the moment?
Correct.
Just to thirty-five.
Just to thirty-five.
To thirty-five, they'll do the overpass.
I know that the intention is to bring it all the way across, but right now, the only thing that's funded, which took forever to get funded, is the section from Mines Road to thirty-five.
Correct.
And that is currently under design and...
Yes. My understanding at the last MPO meeting, uh, monies were, uh, put to, and it, it's in a draft, but it's going to be presented the, for the funding for the overpass.
For the overpass?
For the overpass. That's not yet, but right now, it's the west side, the overpass to them. Uh, possibly, uh, a donation of land to put in the road by the company.
Well, you could put in the road yourselves, right? There you go, already. And that would be my suggestion to you guys. I mean, be nice, give us the...
Everybody wants us to be nice.
Okay, so...
So should we approve it as a total B-three without the question? Okay, then I'd like to make a motion.
Motion to close public hearing and...
Yeah, motion to close public hearing and approve voluntary annexation, um, and an initial zoning of a B-three.
Um, to be, to be clear, it is a one for the remainder of the tract?
We, we, we do support that. However, our, our position is B-three for the thousand feet to the west of the schools, of the schools and for R-one, one thousand feet north of the school.
Since here, since one thousand to east.
We need to a five-hundred-foot dog around it. We got just two dogs.
Uh, but are you okay with the R-one for that, uh, northern and eastern edge?
The northern, eastern, east, uh, well, I think the recommendation is B-three for that.
No, our, our recommendation is B-three for the...
The school.
The eastern edge.
West of the schools, east of the tracks.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And R-one, north of the schools and on the northern side of the track.
Okay, but let's just make it five hundred. You're protected anyways. It's two blocks.
Our recommendation is the one thousand. So that...
Our...
Forward with that.
We'll keep you five hundred miles east.
Madam Chair, going back to what I said earlier. It's just a recommendation at that point. When you guys come to apply for your plats and your zones, you're will apply at that point.
Right now, I'm just suggesting.
For initial zoning, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, then I will change my motion, um, for, uh, staff recommendation, um, but with seven hundred and fifty-foot buffers for both.
Okay, uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion K.
No, it's like...
Open two, okay.
Oh, uh, motion to open public hearing K. No, I'm sorry, uh...
L. Hey, what's... Public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M1 on a tract of land totaling ten, totaling ten point forty acres more or less as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A and known as annexation tract three located north of FM fourteen seventy-two and south of Pinto Valle. Pinto Valle Drive, sorry.
Yes, Madam Chair. For the record, the applicant is Ramona Sean of Terraval LLC. The engineer of record is Terra South Engineering. The proposed use is M1, Light Manufacturing District, and it is, just for the record, is an existing platted lot used for transportation or housing and the proposed initial zoning for this development is M1. Four letters were sent, zero received for and zero received against. General location. Street view. Two-hundred-foot notification. Aerial map. Zoning map. Feature land use. Sketch of the site. And staff recommendation, staff supports the annexation and staff supports the proposed initial zoning.
Thank you.
And the proposed motion.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item?
Getting me, Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'm Mr. Alberto Gonzalez from Terra South Engineering and we are in favor of the annexation.
Thank you. Um, what are your suggestions, Commissioner?
Madam Chair, just a quick question for the, uh, for the applicant representative. You're okay with the, the designation, right? The, the zoning?
That's what we, uh, we requested.
Motion to close the public hearing and support the annexation and initial zoning application.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Hi. Motion to catch us.
Thank you.
Motion to open public hearing, six M.
Public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M-one on a tract of land totaling nine-point-nine-eight-three acres more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached Exhibit A, and known as Annexation Track Four, located north of State Highway three-fifty-nine and east of Camino Nuevo Road.
Yes, Madam Chair, for the record, the applicant is Christopher Manuel Cabeño, of Cabeño Recovery. The engineer of record is Halen Engineering. The proposed use is M-one, the site is an existing automobile impound yard, automobile record service, and auto auction, and the proposed initial zoning for this development is M-one. Letter sent six, zero, four, and zero against. General location, street view, two-hundred-foot notification, aerial view, zoning map, feature land use, sketch of the area, staff recommendation, staff supports the proposed annexation, and staff supports the proposed initial zoning. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. Is anybody here that wants to speak again? Forward or against this items?
Good evening, members of the commission, we get commandance with Halen Engineering, representing the owner. I'm here to answer any questions, and we support annexation.
Do we have any questions?
Nobody else?
Nobody else.
Motion to close the public hearing and support the annexation and the initial zoning.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Motion passes. Um, next item, moving on to the plats, preliminary plats and preliminary replats. Item seven A, preliminary consideration of cuatrocientos East Right Ranch subdivision, park plat, the intent is open space and drainage eastman.
Motion to approve subject comments.
No, 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 pero.
Am I missing something? I'm sort of hurting it.
This man for the record, uh, the applicant is uh four F Holdings, engineer is Bora Snass Engineering. Proposed use is open space and drainage eastman. The zoning for this two-lot development is R-one A. Location view, aerial view, the proposed plat, uh, staff comments planning, and the proposed motion.
We received an email. And the engineer of record sent an email stating he wanted to be able, he wouldn't be able to attend, but concurs with all staff comments. So now we can proceed.
Motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Second.
Hi, Mr.
Mr. Casares! Mr. Casares! All in favor?
All right.
All against, motion cap. Okay, eight A, we already read, right? So, can I have a motion to hear items nine A, nine B, nine C altogether?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Motion.
All right.
Can you be reading?
Uh, final consideration of the plat of uh National Guard Radiance Center at Laredo Subdivision, approved. Oh, um, uh, final con- uh, final consideration of the plat of Port Laredo, Noster Park, Unit One, Block Two, and final consideration of Killum, uh, East Saunders Street, Bill- uh, billboard number six, uh, number six plat.
Do you have the ordinance?
Yeah. Can I have a motion to approve items nine A, nine B, nine C altogether?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to adjourn? No, 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 wait, wait, do we have any
Directors?
Do we have any director comments?
Well, sort of, uh, we had a a workshop, or, I'm sorry, council, it was a council item, and uh, the council um has eliminated a few departments, uh, as named department, not, they, they're not eliminated. Let me, let me correct that, they're not eliminated, they still exist.
They're re-allowing, they're renamed.
Yes, yes, so, um, there's some some reorganization, hopefully, you know, we're moving in a better direction, things will get speedier, more customer service friendly, so we'll see some uh sort of realignments uh within the city uh very soon.
Okay, and I I would like to, I think I had already spoken to you guys about this, but when um, Mr. Navarro stated that the MPO, um, I know before uh, the MPO would come here and make a presentation of all the um projects that um have are in place and have been placed into the future.
Yeah.
I don't know if we could be able
We, we have heard you, we know that you have requested for
Tech dot
Yes.
To come to give a presentation, we have, we sent them an invitation, I think, approximately two weeks ago. We haven't heard back, we have renewed, uh, followed up with them, um, and we've sent it to more people, so hopefully, we'll hear from from them very soon, so that they could come, uh, we've, we've offered them the next meeting, the sixth, so that, we're just waiting to hear back from them if they're available, so, uh, we're working on it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
No problem.
So, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Second. All in favor?
All right.
Motion cap.